I want to welcome everyone to the Wednesday, August 19th, 2022 study session. And this evening, we're going to be getting an annual, October 19th, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm looking ahead and reading things. So we're going to have an annual financial report presentation, and that will be done by Mrs. Lannaberry.
Right. Madam President, members of the board. So tonight is a requirement by statute to present information about our maintenance and operations override, and then to talk to you a little bit about our bond, the expenditures in our bond, and then upcoming potential projects that we'll have for the future. And then I'll recap a little bit on capital projects. So I think you've heard every year from me a little bit, and I am trying really hard with both Brunner's request and I think Mr. Worson, I think all of you would like to not see as many numbers, but see more information and hopefully more of a story about where we're going for the future. So I'm attempting that, would love some feedback when we're done about how I can help make it meaningful to you and helpful for the future. But again, we're going to talk a little bit about the requirements, the history. We're going to go over a few expenditures, where we're going, and then we'll talk about that capital planning process that we're really excited about as we move forward. So the very first thing is there is a statute, the Arizona revised statute 15-481 Y and K, and it requires us to have a public meeting. So that's what we're doing right now is ultimately we're presenting and then tonight having the public meeting to talk about the M and O override and then how we spend our bond proceeds. So there is statutes that guide us to do that, and then we're required before October 31st, between September 1st and October 31st, to come to the board to review that. All right, so a couple of things on budget history that you should know. Back in 2003, we were at a 10% override. And before, you could do a 10% override, and then you could do a 5% K3 override. You couldn't do a 15%. And then legislation changed, and that allowed you to do both and combine them together, or you could have two separate ones. In 2013, we went after for the first time a 15% override, and then we continued that again in 2017. We passed one again last year. Now, they don't stack on top of each other. They, when, once you pass one, the other one goes away and the new one begins. I think that's confusing a lot of times for our voters, but very important for them to understand. We do go after our overrides every four years. In case we lose an override, we have the ability then to go after an override one more year without having to cut our budgets. And you can see that when you look back from the 2008 to 2013. The one time that we lost our override was in 2012. A lot of things were happening. I think Prop 204 happened at that time where there was a big sales tax increase. They were looking for it, failed drastically. And at that same time, almost every school district failed their elections during 2012, really due to some of the other big propositions that were on the ballot. But we were very fortunate because we didn't have to make any cuts because we did it in year four instead of year five. So our next one will be in 2025 when we have to do this. We would love to change legislation to fix that to where we only had to go out every 10 years and not every four, or even every eight or nine years. But it comes quicker than you think, every four years. All right, a couple of things just are, we had approved, 2016, 2017 is when we approved the last voter initiative. And the last time that we spent the money from the voter initiative from 2017 was last year. So we're going to talk just a little bit about that because we did in last year. You just approved the annual financial report. We spent all the dollars related to the override in the fiscal year. And then this year, the one we're operating in now is actually the first year, even though our voters approved the override in 2021. This is the first year of that voter initiative is this year. So we're fully funded this fiscal year in '22, '23. We're fully funded actually through '26, '27. And if we didn't ask for another override and go back out to our voters, we would then have to decrease that override in '27, '28 by one-third, and then by two-thirds in '28, '29, and we would then be gone in '29, '30. So that's why we ultimately will probably go back. We'll ask, again, it's your decision to ask our voters to renew the override, but we'd be bringing that back to you probably after our override committee meets in 2025, '26. We'll be bringing that back to you, and you as a board will make a decision if you want to put that on the pamphlet or not. All right, override. So a couple of little things to know about our override. If you were to go back and look in our voter pamphlet, that's important for community members to know is they can always go and look at the voter pamphlet for what was approved and what voters voted on. At that time, we had a budget of approximately $35 million. And again, it's based on number of kids and miles driven times 15%. That's pretty much the basis of that, based on your maintenance and operations budget. That tax rate was around $1.34 approximately, and we ultimately had started that. The first year was 18, 19 is the year that we began that. The annual expenditure budget, '21, '22, this past year was the last year that we had the override for the voter that was approved, yes?
A quick question. The dollar 34, all these dollars, are these like per $100,000 of house value?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, great point, yes. So on $100,000 house, it'd be $134. So last year's budget went up because we were in the fourth year of it, and that was approximately, our budget was around $40 million for the override. So it was $40 million, $373,000. Our tax rate was $1.18. And that, you can see the reason it's dropped is not necessarily that the override has gone up that much. It did go up because our base support level had went up, and of course, that increases. But also, the tax rate dropped because our assessed values jumped so much throughout, over those period of time. As you know, over a four-year period of time, all of you probably in your own homes have seen that increase in value. So therefore, it's reduced that amount of assessed value. So that, therefore, that tax rate went down to $1.18.
Lanna, you're confusing me a little bit.
Sure.
The first one, the $1.34 is the override. The annual expenditure budget is just the tax rate for that, right? They're two different things?
Yes.
Okay.
So ultimately, the annual expenditure budget was $40 million. We spent $40 million. Now, we don't put it in a budget on its own and say, this is what we're spending specifically on and track it that way. It just becomes part of your overall $330 million budget, for example. It becomes part of that. You don't track it separately. It becomes part of that full amount, and then you spend it within your limits of your maintenance and operations budget. This year's budget, since we're moving into this year, the budget's $43 million. And the reason that's increased so much is because there's a huge increase, as you know, to the base support level. And so therefore, that increase has impacted the amount that we can collect for our override. Because again, it's based on the revenue control limit, which increased with the base increase. And so we have, our budget this year is $43 million. The tax rate is around $1.19. So again, approximately pretty similar to last fiscal year. What is in the voter pamphlet and what do we spend our overrides on? Hasn't really changed much really over the years. We continually want to make, because we can't go after any new additional dollars. Remember, it's the same amount, the same 15%. I wish we could go after 20 or 25% and increase that, but we can only go after 15%. That's the maximum amount. You could go less, you could ask for a 12% or 13% override, but we're trying to maximize being one of the lowest funded in the nation in public education. We try to maximize every dollar we can in the budget. So the big areas that we've always had in place since pretty much the beginning is we want to maintain respectable class sizes here in the East Valley compared to our other public schools. We have respectable class sizes. Are they perfect? No. But we try to maintain that in staff at respectable sizes. We want to make sure we're always retaining quality staff. And so we want to, we don't always have the highest salary schedule, but we're always trying to push to put as much money as we can into our salary schedules for our teachers and also for our support staff and all of our employees, but especially in those areas to attract and retain staff. We want to enhance our technology services. It's not, it's, not only do we have to buy software or end computers, but we also have to have the services and the software and the annual subscriptions and the people to support that, so that's super important. We want to implement programs related to our strategic plan always. So everything that we do in that, all of our programs are aligned, and we support those programs. And then we want to make sure that we, when we, we don't want to have to eliminate programs because of funding. So that's part of the reason overrides are in place is so they can help enhance those programs that we want to see that are successful. And if it goes away, we'd have to eliminate some of the successful programs we have in our district if the funding was not there. And then again, we always are trying to develop our staff. We've been able to use some of our Prop 301 money to offset that and not necessarily M and O. So we've been able to maximize dollars, but we want to make sure that we have money to develop our staff as best possible throughout our district. All right, so just jumping over now, talking a little bit about, before we jump into bonds and a little bit away from M and O, I want to talk about the school facilities board for just a minute. We've been fortunate in our district to receive close to $100 million in school facility board projects for Castile High School. And then we had, that was for the new high school at Castile, but also for additional space at all of our high schools, and then for our new high school at ACP Erie that was our new ACP High School. So ultimately, we've been very fortunate to have those dollars, and we didn't have to use district capital or district bond dollars to support all of that, which I think is really helpful because that means our, we would have had more, a bigger voter initiative to cover all of that. And ultimately, the school facilities board paid for a portion of what the community then didn't have to pay for. So very fortunate, but now we do not qualify for any dollars. So the board approved a plan back in September for the capital plan for '22, '23, but we're not growing overall. And so we do not qualify for new facilities or new schools. But we still have to report based on our population, what we project, any construction costs or requirements and projects we have. And we still submit that in, and you as a board still approve that plan, but we don't qualify for new additional dollars. And in the past, in a lot of these presentations, you've been seeing all of the money that's came through with the school facilities board. We don't, we are going to still go after, and Tom and his team do a great job of going after building renewal grants, and they will continue to do that, but that's a different pot of money for building renewal versus new construction. One quick thing before we jump into the bonds is that our tax rate comparison. We are very fortunate to have a robust commercial ability to tax our commercial industry, being the price corridor and here in the city of Chandler and even in the town of Gilbert. And so our tax rate is the third lowest. You can see it's at 5.96. Tempe Union, Kyrene, and Gilbert, slightly lower than us in that. But overall, you can see that our tax rate is still lower than Higley's, Tempe Union, Tempe School District, which, because there's two different districts in that, Mesa and Queen Creek. Part of the reason that we have that, that we are so much lower, especially than the ones that are down here, is because our commercial properties, we have so much bigger assessed value. They're more of a bedroom community, or they don't have that commercial presence that we do within our district. And the other reason, some of them have capital overrides in place, and sometimes that's a portion that they do have. All right, voter approval. So we still have the 2015 bond. And last year, I told you the 2015 bond would be over by now. We have a 2015 approval of $196 million. As you know, we built Augzir and Castile. We renovated projects, we redid surfacings. We had buses that were purchased out of there, technology items, infrastructure for technology. And then we paid off our lease when we had built Castile. And so we have really maximized that project, and we went through all that. And last year, we said we'd be finished because in May of 2021, we had purchased buses, and they're, they're the only portion we still have left. So what did we spend in that 2015 bond? We spent $16 million approximately in transportation, almost $140 million between new schools and renovation projects. We had about $19 million in non-instructional projects. Most of that was the transportation facility and a few other non-school buildings. A couple million dollars for a vision software system in the administration furniture and equipment technology arena, and then a little bit of money up in school improvement. So we were, ultimately, we spent 194 million of that 196. And the only thing that we have left still out there, the same thing as we had last year, is we have 10 buses that we had purchased and did a purchase order for in May of 2021, and they will be coming in May of '23. So two years later, we are used to about an eight-month delay. I think we're down to two years, is what Tom found out yesterday when asking. We have another order out there that you approved from the 2019 bond, but we're going to keep ordering them because they are backed up. And so we will continue to do that. As you know, you did an increase in the buses too, just because there has been an increase in prices. And they pretty much will say, if you don't take that increase, then you can just, they won't deliver the buses. So we have unfortunately been in that circumstance, bringing back to you that, I think it was $8,000, $9,000 increase per bus. All right, so the 2019 voter-approved bond was $290 million total. Majority of that, as you know, was in the construction arena for two new schools with between Rice Elementary and ACP High School. We also had a chunk in there for transportation, a chunk for $31 million for technology and furniture and equipment, and then a small amount, about $8 million for non-instructional buildings that are either considered administration, or if it's your warehouse or your instructional resource center, any of those buildings that aren't specifically instruction, that there was a little bit of money if we needed to do some renovation projects or furniture and equipment for those areas. As of right now, this is the only chart I put up on this presentation, but I think it's an important chart. This is $290 million is what we had voter approval for. And there are five categories. Our transportation, pretty much construction, furniture and equipment or technology, and then the admin furniture and equipment or construction. And we've spent 120 million, or we have POs in place right now where we're in those projects, doing those projects currently. We've spent 120 million, almost 121 million. We have $29 million of preventative maintenance or some current, or current projects that Mr. Narducci has given us the thumbs up on to move forward on. $20 million, most of those all are the projects that you've seen where Mr. Dunn and his team has talked to you about 10 years out, how much preventative maintenance do we have and an estimate of what that looks like. So that's pretty much just three years of preventative maintenance. And then what do we have left? We have 140 million. And then yes, do we have things to do with that? But that is actually how much is left, that we do, we do not have either a thumbs up that we need to proceed, or that we don't have a purchase order, it's already completed. Where are those chunks left at? We have a chunk in transportation, so that's going to be important over the next three years to continue to purchase buses for our fleet. We have over 200 fleet, super important to continue that. As those buses age, miles get put on them, or there's work orders in that arena. We have 94 million of construction, so yes.
17 million?
We do, actually, we had 25 million. We have purchase orders out for $7 million, yes.
But you said remaining balance.
Yeah, that's how much we have left. We had, the bond was 25 million. We have spent 7 million or have purchase orders out there for $7 million worth of orders.
Okay, but basically, the 17 million is obligated?
Yep, nope, that's left. That's, we haven't obligated it yet.
So if they're buses, why not order them now?
We, well, we have, we, that's what this order is in. We do have them ordered.
So it is obligated?
25 million, we have 17 left. So we will, we'll come back to you again at the end of this year and order additional. We'll keep doing, we don't want to order all of them at once because we did that once as a district. We ordered 47 as a district at one time, and they all came in at once. And then trying to replace 47 because they all went down, pretty much we ordered internationals at one time. And that wasn't a good, it was really hard for us to replace those internationals at 47 when they didn't work quite right. So we try to order as many as we need, so when they come in, they're staggered, and then we can replace those. But we do have a huge order in, Joel. We, you have approved the one that hasn't came in yet, and then we have a second one, the big order that we did put in place. And we'll put another one in this, probably in December or January, an additional one. Is anything else on that, can you think on ordering buses? Nope. All right, this, so we have 17 million left. This is just the remaining balance of what we have left right now. A 17 million for the next, when we plan for the next three years, we should put in a purchase order of about 6 million each year in the next three years. We have $94 million of construction. So this would be if we, and we're going to talk a little bit about if we need to build a new facility, renovations, surfacing, HVAC, roofing, parking lots. That's where that $94 million is at. We have 7 million in administrative, meaning non-instructional buildings, or like I said, warehouse, IRC, transportation facilities, any of the support service areas. We have 7 million if we need to do anything in those areas. And then we have $21 million left in technology and furniture and equipment. So as we go to replace the furniture, flexible furniture at schools or technology, we have $21 million left in that area. So 140 million left, yes.
So that 94 million could be used to rebuild schools?
It can, yes, definitely. All right, so bond projects that are completed, and we have done a number of things. As you know, in '21, '22, we have a number of projects that we were able to, and I'm going to try to get this to show. We finished ACP High School, as we know. We had to finish it last year. We've updated flooring projects at Anderson, Basha, Bogle, and Knox. We've replaced HVAC at Haley, Santana, and Willis. We've put Sally or Sarah ports in, and we'll explain what those are in a number of our schools in one phase, and we're about to continue those.
Lana, slow down.
Yep, sorry, it's on a thing, so apologize. Let me stop then.
You're going way too fast, sorry.
That's okay.
At least for me, anyway.
Do you have a question? Do you want me, do you want me to start again? Okay, let me go back, let me see if the, it plays off of the thing. There we go. We have the NPR wall at Conley that we updated, and then shade structures that you can see listed in Phase 1. We have a second phase coming. And then parking lots at CTA Independence.
What's the NPR wall?
Say that again?
What's the NPR wall?
What was?
They had a huge attractive wall at Conley that was, that was.
Oh, operable wall?
Yeah, the wall, but it was really, or fairly large, kind of replaced between the stage and.
Okay.
The CEF building was redone, and then security cameras at all of our elementary sites were updated.
CEF, CEF, was that House?
That was, the Perry House, yes.
Okay.
The roof. There's a number of other projects too that were actually completed, but those are the big projects that we completed in '21, '22. Now, remember, we did a lot of projects in 2021. Those were just the projects that were completed in the '21, '22 school year. Now, one minute, let's see here. All right. So here are some of the projects we have that are in place. The central kitchen remodel that we're doing. We also are adding classrooms at ACP Middle School currently. We are doing a culinary update at our Hamilton High School. You can go over to the high school, or to Hamilton High School, and you can see the cafeteria that we're updating. And fencing projects throughout. Fire panels at a couple of our, our junior high and our elementary. Flooring projects here at the district office. HVAC replacements at three of our schools.
When did we approve the fencing projects?
What, some of the fencing projects, I think, are on JOC contracts, and some of those.
They're under the threshold.
Do you want us, we can send out information?
What do you mean, under the threshold?
So each of our JOC contracts that you approved, either on previous board action items, have been approved for certain vendors to do projects. And so I believe one of those fences was underneath one of those JOC contracts.
Yeah, I remember seeing like Bogle, but I didn't remember, it went by so fast, I didn't remember. I couldn't replace all of them.
That's okay. And one thing that you can do too, that for each of you, is on the Excel spreadsheet, just if you want to see specific schools and every school we've done, if you go to the spreadsheets, we've given you a couple of different spreadsheets. And on that spreadsheet, there is one that'll outline every fencing project and every project we've done on these lists. So when you go through the Excel list, you can see every single project.
So back up again, so help me understand the threshold a little bit. It still has to come to the board as an information item, or we don't have to come to the board, or what?
No, we brought to you the threshold of $2 million for our JOC contracts. And so those do not have to.
So what do you call those contracts?
JOC, job order contracts.
Okay.
Or 250,000, yeah.
So you can do a project under 2 million without really telling us?
Yeah, that's the projects that we brought, that's the contracts that we brought forward. We went from $1 million to $2 million on those projects. And is there anything, can I think of any projects? What other projects?
Well, fencing projects were all part of security upgrade. The Anderson Junior High, Anderson Elementary is probably the largest one that wasn't fully secured from the outside.
Okay.
Anderson Elementary and Anderson Junior High, the fencing project was part of the security upgrade. The fence that's surrounding it wasn't up to our seven-foot height, it was five-foot height. So it was a significant project where we went in to increase the height of the fence. And so the Anderson complex now will be secure 100% from the outside. And all projects that we, that we do have significant dollar value, you do go through Mr. Narducci and communicate it to you, whether you had, they come to the board meeting for approval or not, they're certainly on our, on our board updates that Mr. Narducci shares with you. Some of the projects Atlanta's sharing too, some of our flooring projects. I know I emailed Ms. Mazdin these summer carpet projects. They're listed in this school year because they are scheduled to be done, but haven't been done yet. Santana Junior High, HVAC is going to be done this summer. Willis HVAC will be done this summer as well.
You know how we have the student activity area, and then we have the computers. Could we not add a third category for these items so we can just see what's being created?
What was the first part that you said?
Well, we have on the agenda, you can look at the student activity numbers. Also, you can look at the technology. So maybe in these job order, that should be another category that just shows up as an information item.
So we can definitely give that to Mr. Narducci to send to you. We don't do the technology anymore. Actually, the process, we have to bring back certain things on the procurement side because we had a blanket purchase in the, in the past of like 6 million. We just kind of showed dollar amounts after they were expensed. We didn't actually bring them to you in the, in the past. We never brought them to the board. So now we're actually bringing items to the board related to technology in the actual contract form. So we're, we're doing a little bit more than we used to do in the past on technology by bringing forward the contracts. But we can definitely bring forward lists where Tom gives that to Frank to go over each of the updates in the board, like when he updates the board on those totals.
So those come out in the board updates. So if it's not a plating session, which we already had, it's in there. So I can make that more prominent so that you can go through and see specifically what capital projects have been under those thresholds. Would that help?
Just do it as an information item, we don't have to.
Sure, and he can send that to, he can send out the information, then you can see if you like that.
No, but an information item is part of the agenda.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying.
Okay, well, definitely, we can.
We can just look at it, you know, we don't have to approve it or just look at it.
And would you like that every two weeks, or you want that once a month? Or how would you like that?
I'm up, that's up to you.
I think once a month is fine.
Okay, all right.
What we will do is provide the updates and the superintendent updates, and then we'll, we'll generate a once-a-month information item of all the projects that are being considered, okay? Would that work for the board?
Mr. Dunn, I think, has a really good spreadsheet on every project that's happening right now and where we're at with that, so we can just provide that to you. It's something that we review in our cabinet and with our team. So we'll, we can provide that, I think, that'll probably be something we could do for the future. The other thing too, is if you're, you're welcome anytime you want. The PDF forms that are attached, there's a summary on here that has, if you want just to see a summary, there's a very quick summary of where we are per category. There's also a very detailed Excel sheet that gives you every single project on there. And if you want that more often, you are welcome to have that. That just compares it compared to the voter amount, and then how much is spent, the purchase orders and the totals. So you, so you are welcome anytime you want. We keep this updated also. It just has a lot of detail on it, if you want it. We can give that to you. We can always pivot to bring in subtotals for you. So let us know if you want that also.
The summary was great.
Okay. All right, we will look to try to find something that works for everybody that you guys like to see and can understand, and we'll, we will submit that. All right, the next thing is our 2019 bond upcoming planned projects. There are a number of things that we're doing with planned projects. We have flooring projects that are coming up in a number of our schools. Tom has done a lot in that arena. Also with the roofing, we have a few replacements over the next three years related to roofing. We're also applying for HVAC and roofing projects through the school facilities board, so we'll replace some. Lighting projects, we haven't done a lot of that, but we're going to continue to do more of that in the future. You'll see some of those projects come up. Restroom renovations, some of them are getting old, just like your house. And so we're needing to redo and upgrade restrooms across our district. Fencing, some of it, sometimes we need to add fencing, but a lot of times, we're needing to replace fencing throughout our district and our campuses. Fire panels, as we're updating those, along with some of the technology things that we're doing in schools. Security cameras, you saw elementary, we're working on high schools, but that's a continual thing that we're going to have to replace. Parking lots, something that we're annually redoing and needing to update again throughout our 43 schools. So all of those are super important, and we're planning for those. And how, how do we plan for those? Well, one thing I want to talk about is that we are really trying to make sure that the education side of the house is really driving where we're going, even on the facility and the technology side of the house. So we know that we have educational goals, and that ultimately, we want our students to have success and that all of the different things impact our students so that we've worked on a portrait of a learner and what that looks like. And we know that academically, we, we are aligned with what we want to do and that's success. And then our facilities and our technology need to meet whatever those goals[1734.62] And then our facilities and our technology need to meet whatever those goals that we set up in our strategic plan. And so we've been working for the last two days on that, excited about that process as we improve. And again, our capital side needs to align with what that, what our strategic goals are. So right now, we have a lot of initiatives going on. We have, we're addressing the preventative maintenance that, that Tom has brought to you and has a plan for that we did in our work session. And also back in November last year, we were addressing, you saw the 29 million dollars, pretty much most of that is preventative maintenance over the next three years. We know that we're trying to prepare for renovating, reimagining, reconstructing schools. We know that we're needing to look at our athletic fields. If we're going to, for example, are we going to put in turf on our fields? Are we going to replace surfaces in certain areas? Are, what are we doing in our performing arts arenas? How are we putting lighting back and upgrading lighting in our stage areas? All of those, how are we assessing them and how do we move those forward to enhance or to just replace? And then technology, that's a huge expense, for example, you're not going to see because it's not part of the bond, but we have about 8 million dollars of Wi-Fi expenses coming up. E-rate will pay for half of that. The other portion will probably come from district capital, but ultimately we need to replace a number of our infrastructure related to our Wi-Fi. And then we need to update a lot of our furniture as we progress. We have flexible furniture that needs to come into some of our schools and replacement. That's going to be part of what we need to do when we know some of that's best for academic learning in some of those spaces. And again, we also need to look to see how do we prepare our facilities, not only our technology infrastructure, but how do we prepare them for the future of something we don't know that's coming? And so that's the other thing that we're looking for is how do we prepare schools when we're starting to go through this process over the next couple of years to make sure we're ready? So when we do need to make a change in a few years for something that we all don't know about, we can make that change. So all of those are happening throughout that capital planning process. Right now, in particular, we are working on, and Leo and Heather and their teams are working on the repurposing, reimagining of eight particular schools. We have a committee, an outside committee that's working with that. Community's been involved in that. We're going to potentially use current and future bond dollars to do some things to improve those facilities. But at the same time, we have 40 plus campuses that we're starting to create district KPIs, which are key performance index or indicators. And ultimately, we are going to be assessing that, going through all of our schools to see, do we have the right adequacy? And do we have the right support systems at those schools? Do we have the right infrastructure across our schools or is there a school that's lacking something? And we're going to start to look at that so that we know what to do in those schools. Again, we'll be realigning that. We're going to be working through, the education team is going to be helping us because as they look through those schools and what do they want to do with those schools in the future? That's going to drive what we're going to do on the construction side. And then replacement campuses, one, one school that wasn't in there was Hartford Elementary, was not part of our eight, but that potentially and other schools will be a school that we, we replace. It's in one of our older schools. We're looking at those schools that are older that need to be replaced. By the time we put a lot of money back into them, would it be better to rebuild those schools? And so that's another area that we're working on. But again, all of the areas that you see below, all of, everything impacts us. The portrait of the graduate, the community engagement related to what they want and what they want those schools and where they're moving, all of it, it becomes part of it. Our study on where kids are, you know, families, are we losing kids or are they, are we growing in areas? Where does that shift and what do we do in those schools and those areas? So all of that is part of this process as we, as we start the capital planning process. All right, that's pretty much the wrap on capital planning, the bond. Again, there is a couple of things and I'll open up to questions, but if you look on the Excel sheets that are attached, there's a summary, but there's also very detailed pieces in each category. That has how much we have, what the bond was approved for and then every area shows you all the completed or projects in process. And then what's planned and then what the remaining amount is. And so there's some detail. If you are interested in that, you're welcome to look through that. You're always welcome to ask me for that and I can send that to you at any time.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry.
You're welcome.
Very informative. I really do like the narrative form, but I also like all the supporting documents that come along with it. The Excel spreadsheets and the PDFs of all of the summaries that are there. So are there any questions or comments from other board members? Mrs. Brunner, anything?
I did have a couple of questions. The bond costs, could you just, I know you've mentioned it once or twice, but could you explain that again? And then what are the district's options for minimizing those as much as possible?
Sure.
And how do you make those decisions?
Sure, so we, that's a great question, Ms. Brunner. So we have bond selling costs every time that we sell and we'll sell, we've sold bonds twice, so we don't sell all 290 million upfront. We sell them in sections and we use Stiefel, who is our fiscal agent, who ultimately sells our bonds. And if you sold all of them at once or you sold them in different, there is a slight increase to sell them more than once because there is a cost per thousand dollars of issuance per bond. So over 290 million, thousand dollars, there is a cost. The only savings you'd have by doing one versus two is your attorney fees to create the bond documents are in there and your agencies like Moody's, Standards &amp; Poor and Finch. We get a rating every time. So the only thing you save on both of those is the attorney costs or the ratings because the sell is based on per thousand. Now, you never know when you're selling and we got, we did very well in our first two sales because interest rates were really low, right? But now interest rates are higher, but in the past, sometimes the interest rates were higher at one time and then lower at another. So it just depends sometimes when that happens. And right now, I went to a class today on that. Obviously, everything is still going up. They think it's going to peak in the next couple, November 2nd, rates are going to go up again, probably again in December. And then they think they're going to start to trend down again. So it's going to be interesting to watch the market over the next, a little bit. We're not ready to sell yet again. I think we'll wait a little while because we do have cash reserves. We don't have the whole 140 million that's left because we have a different amount in cash that's sitting there. But once we get close to that cash amount that's about to be gone, then we'll sell again. We have three years from the time we sell those funds to spend those dollars. So that's important for us too. And if we sell technology item, bonds for technology, we have five years to pay that off. So that impacts our tax rate. So we kind of watch where our tax rates are too. Does that help?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my other question, and it might involve Mr. Dunn as well, I'm not sure. When we replace things and we replace them with more efficient things? Is there an easy way to calculate what the MNO savings would be from investing in more efficient capital spending?
I'll let Tom talk about that and I can say something to that first too. I think that, especially in the lighting and the HVAC, I think the largest savings is in your HVAC and I'll let Tom talk more specifically and then in lighting projects. So we have replaced some HVAC. We're very fortunate that a number of our schools are newer, but definitely areas to look at, especially in HVAC and lighting. Those are your two biggest savers, but you want to say anything else?
Yeah, so lighting, we've got eight schools that we're going to be converting, eight elementary schools will be converting to LED as part of the voter approved bond projects. And the vendor we're, we're working with has provided a payoff time and I think it's about four and a half years. We'll, we'll be at break even point on the money we spend on the lights and then year five will begin reaping a benefit in MNO reduced costs.
Is that a performance contract kind of thing or is it just a, just a bid?
Just a bid estimate on, on payback.
And when you're doing those, are you doing lighting controls also, like occupancy and everything?
Correct.
And we haven't, that's a great question, Mr. Olive. We haven't done any performance contracting because we utilize our bond dollars. So we have not done that in our district and I don't, we don't plan on doing that.
Well, those people make a living.
Yeah. But the other thing, I think a great question too is same thing when we bring you, for example, if we decide to go with artificial turf. For example, for our fields so that everyone can access them at multiple times of the year and throughout the night. We will bring to you what we think will save on the maintenance side because we'll use bond dollars, you know, to build those, but then we'll save on the maintenance and operations side. We'll bring to you once we do get those quotes what that would be.
It's always great to hear that, just so we get like a net number in our head of what the cost truly is.
Yeah.
And I guess my last thing is sustainability with the new group that's meeting. Are, are there any folks who have special training in sustainability or a more complex understanding of those options? When we look at, you know, all the different choices that they're making? How are we pulling that in or do we have someone in the community or from ASU or somewhere that can help, you know, increase our understanding of, you know, if, if something could be, you know, it might be a long one, right? Like 10 or 15 years before you see the payback on a solar versus something else or, you know, whatever it might be. So I was just curious if we have any input from somewhere on that.
Right now, I don't believe in our committee that we have anybody that's specific in that arena. Do we, Frank, that I am trying to get more community?
The only pieces of sustainability are when you contract out with architects and if they have that built into theirs, but we don't have anything built in at district level. The only, the only part, and I, I'm glad you're asking that question because we need to know the lifespan, but sometimes with sustainability, when the lifespan is over, you have to reinvest because you have to replace the whole thing. Or there's a new technology out, say solar, and you're replacing. So we have to look at those major costs of reinvestment. Sometimes it's a break even and sometimes it's not. So that's a good point, I think, to build into our larger construction projects is to see what materials are being used, what's the sustainability of it? And if it can last longer without replacement, it's just a wise investment. Unfortunately, usually it comes with a higher cost. So then we have to just value, we just have to value add that. So that's a very good question.
Yeah, there's, there's like for, for schools, we, we can't take government rebates for solar. So we have to do some kind of energy buyback with a company that takes those rebates and then passes the savings on to us or rents them back to us. And those people have all figured out how to take all the money and not leave a whole lot for the schools and other school districts where I've, I've asked them before, you know, where they have a lot of, lot of solar panels. Is this a good deal for you? And they're like, eh, nah, not really. It's, so it's, it's unfortunately for, for schools, it's not really a great savings. I mean, they'll, you know, down the line, we may save a lot, we'll provide housing for pigeons and shade for cars, but that's about it.
But if, if it's better for our environment and the sustainability of our community and it's the same cost, then maybe that's an option. I'm just throwing out there, you know. Obviously, if it's significantly more expensive, that probably isn't an option for us, but yeah.
Good suggestions though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Olive, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, Laura actually hit it off a couple of my questions, but I did have another one about, so we're going to go back in 25 for another bond, most likely. When do we, when do we decide whether or not to, to go?
So I, we actually, we need to make a decision if we want to go on 24 or 25 because in 25, we have to do the override. So do we want to put an override and a bond on the same ballot or do we want to go after 24?
No.
Which would be, yes.
No, no, no.
My, I think right now, most of the time, we've never done that. We would be potentially going after a bond in 24 and then in 25, we'd have the override. So that's why we have placed everything as three years strategically on here. And then we do have a lot of big expenditures coming up, a replacement of a campus, potentially 30 million dollars. We have surfacing, for example, of our football fields, potentially could be a million dollars or more per field. You have renovations of certain schools. We have technology projects that are coming. We have buses. So we definitely have a need for that 140 million dollars over the next three years. We will be analyzing that. We're going through that. Like I said, there's a bunch of different pieces. We have the preventative maintenance down. We're going through the committee right now with the eight schools. We know we need to rebuild a school or two for sure. And then we know we have to purchase buses and we have technology. So no matter what, we have a huge chunk coming in these three years. And then I'm assuming we're going to probably ask you, after we meet with the bond committee, of course, to go after a bond in 24. We could wait till 25, but putting two together is.
So would that be in like the spring of next year or would it be this fall or?
It will probably be in the, we would ask for, because we would go after it in November of 24, so it'd probably be in 23, in fiscal year 23, when we start working on that. Probably starting like in June, I mean in, I don't know, February through June of 23.
All right.
Ms. Love, do you? Mr. Worth?
Jason asked my question, but it made me think of another issue on it. So you mentioned both an override and a bond at the same time. Now I'm a little dated. Are some districts having success doing both?
They are, yes. It used to be thought that you weren't successful if you put both together, but actually the data shows that they're successful, just as successful together or apart. We just, you know, you take that chance if one, they don't like one of them to potentially vote negative on the other one too. But there is data showing that they're successful both, but I think we'd want to take a look at that and see what we think is best for Chandler and then go from there. And Jason, I said that wrong. I apologize. It'd be February of 24. We'd probably start in like January, February with our committee. And you'd be asking as a board in June of 24 to be putting it on the ballot. So it would be, we're doing a lot of work over this year and next year. That's when a ton of our work is going to get done. We're going to be bringing back projects, really spending the 140 million. If we haven't spent the 140 million, then we would probably need to delay that piece, but we should be spending it. We're losing money, unfortunately. We've lost a lot of money, I think, in some ways when you can't spend all 290 in your first year, right? With inflation, we've lost the ability, because everything is more expensive, to have additional projects, but that's just part of it. You can't spend all of it at once anyway.
And Ms. Berry, I think, also, I think, once we get through this committee work with the reimagining and the, and the replacement, I think it'll give the board a little clearer picture as to how much is left in the 140 million to see whether the bond is more of a priority than the override is. And then we also have to see what happens with the AEL to see if the override is going to be something that, you know, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not new money. It's keeping everything that we have moving forward. So, but I think for the capital projects, it'll be a little easier to know after we show you what, what's going to, what we're looking for out of the 140.
And if we need to do a planning session where we're talking about projects and big projects, I'm sure Frank will bring that up as we move forward, right? With our, like we have in the past. Go ahead.
Okay, so again, the board's giving me, thoughts to give me a question, back to Lars. So the interest rate on the bonds, what was, what's traditionally around the average interest rate?
Well, our last ones are at two, around two, two and a half. I think they're up to three and a half, four and a half percent.
The reason I ask that, I just hope the community is aware how low it is.
And it's, and continuing to go up.
The other thing that I can just encourage you because I've seen it happen is stay way out in front of these construction projects. And sometimes we started them too late and we had trouble getting schools open, trouble getting supplies and materials. So we got the resources and I think if we need to, we can bring on more staff. Let's just stay out ahead of it so we don't drag our feet and not have it done in time. Just what I experienced in the past.
Mrs. Berry, going back to overrides. In our, let's see, let me go over the, go back to, oh, my, there we go, ooh.
That was fast.
Yeah, I don't know why that happened. So our, typically we go out every four years. Does the law prevent us from putting the, saying a date when the override will start? Meaning, could you go for it at four years, but say it doesn't take effect until the next year in the, in the documentation?
That's a great, I've never thought about it that way, Ms. Mazdin. That's actually a really good point. I'll ask. I don't know that, I don't know that answer.
I mean, because, you know, it's, it seems like we're making it immediate upon, you know, the, the next fiscal year.
Barb, say that again. I don't think I listened very well. Can you repeat it?
Yes, what I'm saying is that, you know, normally we go out in November of a year, in the, in year, in the fourth year, no, in the.
Yeah, in the, it's in the fourth year, yeah.
In the fourth year, but we still have a whole nother, if it passes, then that following July 1st, it gets implemented. But can you put it in the voter pamphlet that it doesn't actually get implemented until a year from July? A year and a half, basically, after you have voted it in.
That would buy you another year.
It would buy you another year and then you would have, instead of going out every four years, four years, four years, for, you know, two of them being an eight year span. Two of them would actually be a full 10-year span if you could do something along those lines where, where you go out in the fourth year, but you say it's not effective until the end of the fifth year.
You could, you would just put off buying the bonds basically, right?
No, no, this is for the override.
Oh, okay.
I'm lost.
So, so what would happen is, so for example, you would go out in 2024. Typically in November of 24, you would ask your voters, they would approve it. Starting in July, you would get rid of the previous override, the 2021 override, and you would immediately implement the new voter approved override. So it just starts. You don't, you don't have your fifth year of your previous override. You've only had four and you start on your new voter approved. Barb's saying, can you ask the voters when you go out to just wait another whole year so you can still use the last previously approved override to at least get through five years? And then start on the new voter initiative for four years. So it just gives you one more year. So then you're not having to go out every four years. If you got in a cycle, then it'd be ultimately five.
Right, and, and I'm, I'm like, you know, why can't it be effective on a, on a future date rather than immediately at the end of the fiscal, the current fiscal year?
I'll definitely ask our attorneys. That's a great, great idea. And maybe there's a legislative change if not.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions, Mrs. Berry, thank you so much for going over all this for us. And it is great for the community to see where the money is going and what kind of projects that we're doing. I would urge everyone to take a look at the Excel spreadsheet to show exactly where we have been putting our bond money and that our override money has also been very well used. Thank you. Oh, and Mr. Worth has another question.
You're a little older. It takes a while to think of it. You know how your, your screen was automatically moving? Do you have the ability to slow it down?
Yeah, so I apologize. I started that because I thought you'd want to see pictures instead of lists, so I will.
No, but pictures would be great, but it was just too fast.
Sure, sure. We'll fix that for the future. I'll make it slow.
That was just me.
Sorry about that. I was trying to be, I shouldn't say I was. Mrs. Julie Craig actually helped put that piece together. She's been amazing with her graphics. She's one of our internal graphic design specialists. So she helped me do that. It's pretty cool, but definitely can make it slower, so. Or pause it. I need to learn to pause it quicker.
It's time sequence.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And I think in about five minutes, then we will be having our reception for foreign exchange students. So, thank you.